I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been approved and seconded. You all in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion has been approved, five to zero. We have public comment from Chris Dotson. Would you please come up? And thank you. Please state your name.
Hello, I'm Chris Dotson, 104 Gale Road in Danville. And I'm here on behalf of Danville Tri-Cappa. Can you hear me?
Yeah, talk into that.
I'm here on behalf of Danville Tri-Cappa and the Fair on the Square Committee to thank the town for all of their help this weekend with Fair on the Square. They helped us out with making sure the square was clear with trash, electric picnic tables, and cleaning up afterwards. It's a great event. Our vendors were really happy. A lot of them are excited to come back next year. We made a lot of money off of it, so we'll be able to give out our fall grants and spring grants this year, and our high school scholarships. And we had a lot of community participation that came out to be there for the event this weekend. So, wanted to thank everybody from the town that helped us out with that.
Well, thank you for that. I thought it was a good thing as well.
Thank you.
And I'm sure everybody else did.
Yep.
Thank you for telling us. All right. A, proclamation, Constitution week. We're gonna have Nancy read the proclamation. We have two people here that want to take a photograph. And we will give you the proclamation right after that. Do you want to be in the picture, ma'am, as well?
Okay, our local National Society of Americans Revolution proclamation has started with Constitution. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 23rd anniversary drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America at a constitutional convention. Whereas it is being proper to afford official recognition to the magnificent, memorable anniversary. If you like celebrations, we will commemorate it. Whereas public law, 915 guarantees issuing of a proclamation by the President of the United States of America just in 17th Constitution week. Now therefore, we by virtue of the authority vested in us as the town council, begin hereby proclaiming the year of September. I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all rights and responsibilities. Witness whereof, with here in chief center hand, the constable, Indiana, to be a citizen of the state of Indiana. Year by law, 2020.
Thank you, girls, for asking for that.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
B, ordinance 24-2020, ordinance to establish a bond for police equipment. Clerk Treasurer?
So, Zach with Taff Law is here, and we are presenting ordinance 24-2020, which is the GO bond ordinance for the police department.
Good evening, Council. Zach Klutz with the Taff Law Firm. We're serving as a bond counsel for this general obligation bond, 24-2020. This is a general obligation bond that authorizes bonds up to a maximum amount of $475,000. The proceeds of the bonds will be used for police vehicles and public safety equipment. The interest rate is a not to exceed 3.5. We won't know the exact interest rate until we price the bonds. And we're not taking them to market, but we are accepting bids from banks and perhaps underwriters. The maturity date will be January 1, 2024, and they will have a payment structure of a January 1, July 1, principal and interest. These will be supported by property taxes, unlike the next ordinance, which is a revenue bond and your ratepayers. So, in addition to answering any questions and having any further discussion on this ordinance, we also need to have a, open the floor for comment. This is, also serves as the hearing for the additional appropriation. These bond proceeds were not contemplated in the original budget, and therefore, we will file an additional appropriation with the LGF. So, with that, be happy to answer any questions.
If I understand correctly, you need the council president to open the floor for public comment, and then close it for public comment, and then they can take action. Yes, sir. So, you'll need to gavel the public hearing open for this particular matter.
Okay, the public hearing is open.
Public comments on this bond. Mr. President, no one's approached the podium.
Close it.
You may close it, sir.
Close the public hearing. Thank you.
With that, I can answer any questions. In terms of timing, we'll likely sell the bonds mid to late October. And so, the bond proceeds will be available at that time, assuming passage of the ordinance, of course.
Mr. President, this is up for a second read. It was first introduced two meetings ago, so you can take action on it tonight.
Chief Hilton, how many police cars are you anticipating purchasing with the proceeds?
We anticipate 10.
And how many is currently in the fleet?
Currently, I have like 20 vehicles. We're gonna be trading some in, but we need 10 new ones.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 24-2020 to establish the bond for police equipment.
We have a second? Looking for a second? We have a second? Jenny, take the roll, please.
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed, five to zero. Thank you. C, ordinance 25-2020, ordinance to establish a bond anticipation note for wastewater projects. Jerry? Oh, same gentleman?
Jerry, Chris, Town of Danville. This is for beginning our four priority projects. It's a very favorable bond to the town, as in we may borrow just 1 million or up to 6 million, depending on how much we have to spend on the projects. We are working with developers to hopefully have them pay for the projects instead of us. So, there's some flexibility with the bond, and it's a very complex bond. But, we will, me and Jenny will read it and work through it, make sure everything's in place. But this is for future growth.
All right.
Mr. President, like with the last one, we will need to open this up. You'll need to gavel open the public hearing.
All right, I open it up for public comments.
Comments from the public?
No public comments. Meeting is closed. Any comments from the council? I'm looking for a motion. Oh.
If I could, I'll just explain the parameters of the bond, just for the record briefly. This is a sewage works revenue bond, which means this will not be supported by property tax. It'll be supported by the ratepayers of the sewage work system. This is a maximum amount of $6 million. We're going to do this, through this one ordinance, we will likely issue initially a bond anticipation note to pay for some initial engineering costs and project planning. That could be up to 6 million, but I think likely it'll be around 2.5 million, and that'll allow for not only engineering, but for preliminary dirt work, preliminary work on the project. That ban will likely be taken out by the full bond in a year to two years, again, up to the maximum amount of $6 million. For purposes of the bond, or the ban, it'll be a interest rate of not to exceed 3.5%, and for the bond, not to exceed 5%. The maturity date for the bonds, would it be a 25-year bond, so 2020, I'm sorry, 2045. The one item that was in flux, I believe, when this was introduced two meetings ago, was the actual specific project description. So, I would like to, perhaps, I'll read the project description. I've talked to the engineer about that, and I'd like to submit it so that we have a full, complete ordinance. I also heard that perhaps there was some concern or some questions about some blanks in the ordinance. Those blanks are likely, we have the form of bond, what the bond will actually look like. And so, a lot of those blanks won't be filled in until we have a bond purchaser, and we know what the specific terms are. But the bond purchaser wants to see what the form of bond will look like. So, to the extent you saw any blanks in the ordinance, that's likely what it was. There shouldn't be any other, there should be no other open items to the ordinance. The bond proceeds will be used for the following project description. The project encompasses several individual projects to eliminate sewage overflows and to mitigate INI, infiltration and inflow, in particular areas of the town. The project is more specifically noted in the town's sewer master plan. Also included in the project is a new, larger north interceptor, I'm sorry, interceptor replacement that will assist in eliminating overflows, as well as open new areas targeted for annexation and development. To the extent there's bond proceeds remaining, it'll be, proceeds will be used for the design of the wastewater, the next wastewater treatment plan expansion. So, with that, if I could perhaps submit this, so that we can have this as a full attachment.
Thank you.
Can you describe the process of the bond placement?
Yeah, great, yes. This will be very similar to the GO bonds. We will advertise a notice of intent to sell bonds. Your financial advisor will work with underwriters and banks, local banks, to direct purchase. And there will be a solicitation of bids, and the lowest, most responsive bid will prevail. Knowing that we do have caps and parameters on the interest rate, a not to exceed 3.5 for the ban, and then a not to exceed 5 for the bond. The bond will be a year or so down the road. You won't have to go through this process again. This ordinance will cover both the ban and the bond. So, we know that the interest rate won't be more than 3.5. I have not seen them anywhere close to that lately. It's a very cheap money right now, so.
I just wanted to make sure that we were getting the best interest rate, you know, and that any placement would be in the best interest of Danville.
Yes, we solicit bids, and it's the lowest. And your financial advisor does a very good job of making sure to solicit multiple bids, so it's not just reaching out to one, two banks.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 25-2020.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Jenny, could you please take the roll?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
The motion has been passed, five to zero. Thank you very much. D, ordinance 26-2020, text amendment to zoning ordinance. And you're already up there.
Good evening. I'm here to seek approval for ordinance 26-2020. This is a text amendment to the Danville zoning ordinance by removing multifamily residential uses from the local business district. Plan Commission held a public hearing just this past Monday, and voted unanimously to approve it, or to send a favorable recommendation to you. So, if you don't have any other questions, that's.
Can you give us a little bit of background as to why this even came up?
Sure. We recently had applicant come before the Plan, or the Board of Zoning Appeal, seeking a use variance to put up a self-storage facility at the corner of Main Street and 300 East. And they had originally wanted to do multifamily housing at that corner. And a lot of the neighbors in that area decided that that's not what they really wanted on that corner. So, they had talked to the developer, and so he discussed the fact of maybe doing self-storage, and that seemed to be the preferred use of that property by the residences there. So, upon that, it was a request to remove that use from the local business district.
That's what the neighbors wanted, they preferred?
Yes, they preferred the self-storage, thinking that it was probably gonna have less of an impact on them traffic-wise, you know.
And when we talked with this, about this, we felt like the multifamily should be the exception and not the norm, that they should have to request to do that in that type of zoning district.
Yeah, this would not eliminate it totally, so someone could, right.
So, we have other reasons and future reasons to do this. It's not always good to do something for one person, so, okay.
This fixes some future issues.
Sure, okay.
All right, any comments from the council?
Because this was read through the Plan Commission, had a public hearing, council tonight does not need to do a second vote. They can approve this tonight.
So, we can vote for it tonight?
That's correct. You do not have to suspend the rules for that.
Do I have a motion from anybody?
I make a motion that we approve this ordinance 26-2020.
I second it.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, could you take the roll?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion's been passed, five to zero. E, Resolution 6-2020, resolution to establish TIFF Area 1 Fund. Clerk Treasurer, please.
We're gonna strike that tonight. I sent out an email. I'm sorry, we were having some email issues, but we're striking that. There is a question whether that needs to be a resolution or, in fact, an ordinance.
Okay, we've removed that from the agenda.
It will be brought forth at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. F, Library Declaration of Fiscal Body. Clerk Treasurer?
So, the state of Indiana requires that all public libraries file a declaration of fiscal body to the binding review of the library's budget, which would be the Town of Danville, because it's our center township library. I am presenting to you this evening, just for Tom's signature, it just takes the council president's signature, a declaration of the fiscal body for the library's budget.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Do I have a motion to pass this?
I'd make a motion that we pass, being the fiscal responsible party, declaration for the library.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Jenny, please take the roll.
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Do we have a representative from the library here, by chance?
Nope.
Okay.
I'm as close as you're gonna get.
Okay, the next one is G, approval of the 2021 budget. Jenny, would you like to say anything?
No, we have had work studies, and I'll open the floor to the council or any public comments that we have this evening. And I will need a motion to pass the budget as I presented it this evening, a motion for raises, and then a motion for the insurance premiums.
So, we do the budget first, then the raises?
We can do the budget last, and then, yes.
Well, let me start with raises. The raises go from 1%, 2%, and 3%. To vote on this, I would like to start out with 3%, 2%, and 1%. If we don't get any motions for 3, we'll go to 2. If we don't get any there, we'll go to 1, if that sounds logical. Okay, any discussion on the raises and what we feel? Any of the councilmen?
Well, my thinking is that we, that the town was asked to be really fiscally conservative in their budgeting, and in fact, to cut their budgets by 10%. I honestly really believe that the town employees do deserve a raise, but I'm thinking maybe a 2% might be the most reasonable way to go, just out of sheer fiscal conservancy.
Okay, anybody else?
I would, that's actually where I was headed, too. I think that was consistent with last year as well. I know there were some other ideas brought up in our work study, and I think it's something that we need to consider for next year as well. And one of the things is, and I know this year was crazy, just crazy stupid with everything. I'm hopeful that next year, we had to do some things kind of, you know, with the clock ticking against us. I'm hoping that next year, we'll have a little more time to analyze everything and come up with some creative ideas to not only take care of our employees, but making sure we're not overspending and, you know, and doing the right thing. We are the fiscal body of the town, and it's our responsibility, along with the clerk treasurer, to make sure we're not overspending, and that we're doing the right things with the revenue and things of that nature. So, that would be, I guess, my comment about this process for next year, if at all possible, to, you know, get things going a little sooner, and then bringing ideas to the table, so that we can, you know, be a little creative in the future. I think my gut tells me, I don't want to give them, I don't want to give the employees nothing, because I've been in that position before. I got nothing, and that's not fun. But I think with everything going on, maybe that top rate may not be a good move at this point. We may find out next year that it would have been okay, but like where we are now with what we know, that's where I'm gonna fall.
Anybody else? I'd like to say something. I've sat on the board before, when we had the other people in here. And now that I'm a little closer to you guys, and we've reorganized the town a little bit to run it better like a business, and I see nothing but professionals here. We've had a hard time with the COVID. I see people adjusting for all things that legally we're supposed to do. I see a lot of people working overtime, some people doubling up on jobs. And I just couldn't speak highly, more highly, of all the divisions. The fire department saved my life two days ago, two weeks ago, dragged me out with a crane to stick me in the hospital. Anyways, they had good food there. It wasn't bad. So, we've just got a windfall from our insurance of 20% deduction, which equated to about $160,000. I know the increases are compounded. I do know, as a worker myself and listening to other people, I've watched people work in jobs with no benefits, and they've quit their little higher-paying jobs to go get a place where they got benefits, insurance especially. And we here in Danville are our own little culture, and we don't pay all these professionals as much as Brownsburg and Plainfield and all the rest of the people do. So, my feeling is they should get 3%. And I think they deserve it. I think the way the country's going, if we get the right president in November, we could find an economy zooming along nicely, which I hope happens. So, I would definitely go for 3%. And what I'm going to do is start out looking for a motion for 3. If nobody does that, then we'll go to 2, and then we'll go to 1.
Can I make a comment, Tom?
Yes, sure.
I agree, I agree, I agree. No, I do. I feel like this year's been crazy. I mean, everybody knows it's been crazy. You know, we did give raises last year. The revenue didn't come in like we anticipated it, but we made it. Us as a council, we have to be responsible for the town, for the people of the town. My gut says, I want to give you 5%, but we know we can't do that. Just a comment I'd like to make is, I think a 2% would be a decent raise, as well as passing the reduction of the insurance premiums onto the employees. So, that's my, you know, that's my, what I would like to see happen. I didn't get a chance to make a comment downstairs, because we ran out of time, but that's all I got.
I'll just make my last, my comments here, is that, you know, I've worked this past year, my first year on the council, with a lot of the members of the administration, you know, the employees of the town. And I second, you know, everything that you guys have said, you know, about, you know, the quality, you know, of the work ethic, the dedication. And I am internally grateful for everything that you guys do. During the work study, I did put forth some alternatives, you know, to raises. I put together a bonus structure. You know, I think that ultimately, it might be something that we would look at, you know, maybe in the future, to take a look at. In the interest of time, I don't think that, you know, we really, because of the delays in the information coming from the state, that we're able to, you know, really veer too much off of a normal path. So, no matter what the numbers, you know, go through at, you know, I just want to express my, you know, support for every town member, or town employee and administrator, because I think you guys are well worth it. Thank you.
One more thing here. I like what Chris said with passing that reduction on. Is that, how do we, do we have to pass that separately? How does that whole thing work?
That's the second thing that they'll have to discuss, right?
I like what Chris said as well, except 2 is less than 3. I mean, you guys think of retirement and all that. I know, I ran a business, and I just organize men. And if I didn't have them, I wouldn't have a business. And we really have some people here that know how the town works really well. We'd hate to see them go away. I think what we have is just wonderful. And so, we're a democracy here, and we'll all vote. And I'll start out with, is nobody else gonna say anything? I'll start out, do I have a motion for 3% pay raise? Do I have a motion for 2% pay raise?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Jenny, can you take a roll?
Greg Van Leeuwen.
Not voting against the raises, but I am voting no for the structure.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion's passed, four to one. Thank you very much. The next motion will be, Jenny?
For the insurance premiums, as I presented them this evening, for the 20.6 reduction to be shared by the employees and the Town of Danville total premiums.
Okay, would anybody like to make a comment? You want to talk a little bit more about that, Chris, or are you fine with that?
I mean, you know, we've done so well as a town, and, you know, I mean, I'm a safety guy, so not getting hurt, not going to the clinic, not going to the doctor. You know, that reflects in your insurance premiums. So, you know, I think as a group, we all need to, you know, be rewarded in that. So, I think that we should take that reduction in premiums and pass it on to the employees, and give them their cut of the reduction.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? The only thing I can say on this one is, is that in the past, when premiums went up, so did the cost to the employee. And they bared that with us. Now, we have a bit of a windfall of 20% deduction. I think we planned for 8% increase, and we ended up with 20% deduction, which is 160 grand. So, I agree with Chris. I think we should pass whatever we can of that back to the employees, and now give it back to them, instead of charging them for it like we did in the past. I think that'd be the fair thing to do. I think that'd be the fair thing to do. Any more comments?
Mr. President, I have reviewed the insurance premiums and the predominant program that is being utilized by our town employees is the single health savings account, high deductible plan. And that plan is paid for, the premium is paid 90% from the Town of Danville and from the Town of Danville taxpayers. The employee, the employee's burden is 10% of that premium. A employee that has a spouse, a child, or a family carries 25% of that burden on themselves and the town pays 75% and the taxpayers are on the hook for that 75%. I believe that there's an inequity between the high deductible health savings account, family, child, and spouse. And there's a, a higher portion going to the single. I think that ultimately the 10% is too low and I believe that the, that the taxpayers of Danville deserve that 20% reduction. Not saying that, you know, our, our employees don't, but this is an opportune time to maybe right that ship and move that 10% into a higher, a higher percentage of, of compensation from the, from the employees.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Do I have a motion to pass the windfall down to the employees? Is that what we call it, Mark?
I'd, I'd say you could.
I don't have anything here for.
You, you could entertain a motion to proceed, whoever makes the motion, on whether they want to pass to the employees or pass to the town. So you can, you can accept the motion either way.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal that Jenny provided for us in our work study regarding insurance premiums.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Jenny, can you please take a roll?
Greg Van Leer.
I believe that ultimately this will come back to us in the form of a higher premium in the future, and I oppose.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Motion has been passed 4 to 1. Thank you very much. Now we go into the budget.
Sorry.
Yes, I was gonna say.
I just want to make sure for the budget, I mean, you guys can talk and decide what you want to do, but we still have to go through introducing an ordinance, a public hearing and all of that. So, I just got a little confused with like approve and everything like that. I mean, it's good to have a consensus on what you want to do, but just for the record, I want to make clear that all of that will be done at the next meetings.
We're, we're doing it so we can enter the numbers into Gateway. We, we do understand we have to have a public hearing and ordinance.
Perfect.
So, but Caitlin's right, it'll just be a consensus this evening as the figures were presented to you this evening, that it's a consensus, that that's the information that I will, or we will start entering into Gateway.
So we really don't want a motion tonight?
Because we'll have the ordinance and public hearing. Right, right.
I would just do a consensus.
We just covered general consensus, everybody.
Yeah, come to an agreement on what she can start entering.
Would anybody else like to speak? Do we have a general consensus?
Yes.
Yes, we have five of us consenting. Thank you very much. Okay, staff and council comments. Greg.
Attended the plan count, or the Plan Commission meeting on Monday. I, I just couldn't make it back from Lafayette in time to attend the BZA meeting. And I think RDC is this week also, so I plan to attend that.
It was last week, sir.
Oh, it wasn't? Okay, all right. I'll catch the next one.
Yes, sir.
I don't really have anything to say.
I don't have anything either?
Nope, I'm good.
I believe talks away days is at the fairgrounds this weekend. Is that right? Yes? Okay. Talks away days is at the fairgrounds this weekend.
Okay. Jenny?
I think that, I don't have anything, thank you.
Superintendent Ellison and I believe Kent Elliott from Banning would like to approach the council, reference capital expenditure request. I put it in front of you and hopefully you received an email.
Do we want both of them right now or one?
Yes, both of them can come up. We can do both capital expenditures if you guys want to.
Wait, oh.
What we have is, is a capital expenditure request.
Sorry.
For some wells.
Oh.
This, this, this came up after the agenda had been produced and I sent you an email this afternoon on it.
Matt Ellison, Water Department. Basically what happened was we, we continued to drill north of Blanton Woods and it didn't, only had about seven feet of formation, so there wasn't any, it couldn't be a well. So Kent and I have set up a meeting this morning and we kind of looked around and we decided that well 2, we currently have, and well 3 have like a thousand foot of separation. So we can actually drill one there right in between, which would be right north of the swing bridge, right off the path there. So that's the one, the one capital expense, it's like 59,000. We're gonna go ahead and make that a 20 inch, it's be like a test well, but as they drill, they can always pull back out if they don't find any formation. So, but I went ahead and put it in as, as a, if I got water at 2 and I got water at 3, surely in the middle there's water. So, then the second one is basically going south of Green Valley. We're gonna look at some property back there to just get access to drill a 6-inch test well there. And then at that point, we'll, we'll know. It's, it's a shame to spend the money on these test wells, but that's what they are. And it's kind of bittersweet that you can, we'll know in the future where we don't, we can't go. So, that's kind of the one good thing about drilling them is if they ain't any good, at least we know down the road 30, 40 years when they need more water, they'll know, hey, ain't no point in going there. So I guess that's the best part about that. Kent, you have any done?
You guys didn't go out there with water diviners, you know, doing?
Yeah, this was all part of the hydrogeologic study that we had, the hydrogeologists kind of look at the formation, what the limits of our existing aquifer is, how, how far we could expand that. And so we've been looking at areas that, that make sense to drill. Sometimes you find it, sometimes you don't. And this isn't uncommon, it's a process and, you know, we're kind of flying blind, we're doing our best hydrogeological guess, if you will, on, on getting water. We know where we have existing wells, we know where, where it makes sense. We found two, two good spots already on, on the test wells we already had. The other ones that we did not have good formation, that's good information to have that we can keep on our records for the future when we're looking for more water down the road. This one kind of made sense between 2 and 3, kind of had it in our, in the back pocket, but instead of spending the, the money for a, a test well that's 6-inch, that basically you're just looking at the formation, then you're done with it, you pull the casing out. A lot of times if we know it's, you know, a really good opportunity, likelihood that we're gonna get water, we go ahead and put in a full-size production well casing in it. Then we can actually pump it like we would do at tests and basically develop it. And then that will convert that into a permanent well, so we're not spending the money on the test well. But also, we can also look at it and cut our losses if it doesn't look good into that almost test well cost range. So, we feel like this was a good, good opportunity to do it on the, this one. The other ones we didn't because we weren't sure what we were getting into on those. So, that's kind of where we're at and it's just a process, but we, we felt like it was, it was, we just got done with this last test well and we started looking and we needed to get going again, so we can get this water supply addressed and get things moving instead of waiting another two or three weeks down the road and still keep that, the well driller here on, on site and keep him going on things.
Green, if you'd like to.
And Matt, do you have this in your budget right now?
Yeah, I've, I've got plenty of money in that account to keep going with this as far as that goes.
And, and I'll also add, so, so if this one turns out, the one between 2 and 3, as we expect it to be, we have that cost in our budget. We were gonna bid that with all the other well, wells we were gonna do later. So we're, we're kind of spending this money now, but we're not gonna have to bid that well later down the road. We'll just have to put, set the pump motor and things of that nature. Any questions?
Mr. President, this will require a vote.
Say again?
This will require a vote.
Okay. Any com, any comments? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the expenditure for test wells?
Second.
Second? I have a motion and a second, Jenny? Please call the roll.
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Motion has been passed 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Dig away.
If I could add something real fast.
Sure, take your time.
When we approved the minutes, I don't think we approved, did we approve the work study and the town council minutes? So we need to go back, is that okay Caitlin, if we go back? We need to approve the work study minutes of September the 9th and the town council minutes of September the 2nd.
Which minutes did you make a motion to approve, Greg?
The town council minutes, yeah.
I can make a motion to approve the work study minutes.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Jenny, would you like to call the roll?
Greg Van Leer.
Aye.
Nancy Levitt.
Aye.
Tom.
Pato.
Aye.
David Winters.
Aye.
Chris Gerald.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I may continue, thank you. I received information from Banning Engineering this afternoon, or this morning. They're done doing their surveying on County Road 150 East, which I think all of us agree has been a problem road for several years. The, the survey has come back far better than we anticipated. The road is substantially deep. The problem is, is that the top two inches have been allowing water to come in because they've not been, it's not been sealed in years because again, the, of the question of ownership. And therefore, we think, they estimate we can do the entire project for $305,000, which we do have already budgeted for. It actually is far below what we had anticipated. So what I need tonight is consensus for Banning to move forward with advertising for bids. We want to hopefully close the bid process October the 7th, which would be, or open the bids October 7th, which is our first meeting in October. And at that time, I'll probably seek permission from the council that we are allowed to go through the bids. And by October 9th, if you'll give me permission to sign the lowest, most responsive, because we want to get moving, because we're running out of time to get this project completed. So, tonight I just need consensus to move forward with the bid process and advertising.
Does that, will that go from 200 all the way back down to Kroger?
No, it'll go, stop at 75 South.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Waste management takes care of it from there.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Consensus of the board? Yes, we have 5 to 0 consensus.
Thank you very much, sir.
Mark, would you like to talk about what's going on in the town?
Yes, sir. Department heads met Monday morning virtually. Administration office, we're working, still working on grants. And the office manager is currently, again, enrolled in a grant course. We're keeping her busy as we found out yesterday that Community Crossings Grant is going to open up next week. We're excited about that, so we're going to be applying for that for some of the roadways as well. Public Works has been working on sidewalks, they had a chainsaw safety course and they've been doing some curb painting. Water Department has been doing some hydrant maintenance and some little project drilling wells, I don't, I don't know, I may be wrong about that. Waste Water, they've been doing normal business. They did make some corrections to the plans for the goodwill site. There were some missing things in there, if I'm not mistaken, and Jerry caught those. Parks Department, as I know you've seen, they've been very busy. The amphitheater, they've had concerts, they're working on the front sign. He is working on the awning for the, awning for the Bostic Gym. The roof at the Blanton House and the pool has been winterized. Planning, leases met with Plan Commission, BZA, for projects which include the Goodwill Store, Fast Tracks, the new jail, Starbucks, and Northview Christian Church. Apparently, everybody decided to get their projects turned in on the same day, so. Fire Department's had 1,141 runs for the year. As of Monday, they had collected $11,350 for the baby box. Is there a new figure for that, Rob? Around $13,050, so. They had three runs during the marathon, the Boston Marathon pre-qualifier. Building in Stormwater, Barry, I'm not sure, Kensington is almost done, is that correct? The Stormwater work is almost done in Kensington. Kentucky and Broadway, they found a couple of sinkholes and he's been working on the town hall landscaping. And the sinkhole you, that your friend found at Indiana and Clinton has turned out to be a major, major undertaking. It truly, it was the tip of the.
They just saw a little hole.
Yeah, it was the tip of the iceberg what he saw and it has been.
A big sinkhole, huh?
Yeah, it was huge. So, fortunately Barry had, had some prep work already for that and he had all the appliances he needed to, to make that work, so.
Somebody sent me a text with a little picture of a hole in the sidewalk and said, like he hollered in it and it was like.
Yeah.
Echoing. So, passed it on to you guys and.
It, it turned out.
Put a truck in there.
It turned out to be an issue, yeah. Clerk Treasurer, obviously, has been working on the budget. And the Police Department had 633 runs in August, they've been working on their new hires. And Chief Hilton was kind enough to provide a report, which should be in your packet. And with that, I believe that's all I have from the department heads.
Okay.
I know we have a couple other issues we'd like to discuss and I'll let you deal with that, sir.
So, do any of the department heads want to talk? But I want to talk about what we're gonna do here, formalize.
Anybody else have anything that I've missed? Have I covered everything?
I just want to add that the Kentucky and the Broadway project that I mentioned in the work study.
Of course.
Turned out like Indiana and Clinton.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Wow. Good thing we caught them before a whole car fell in.
Yeah.
One of them, it was very possible that could have occurred.
Trails and sidewalks kickoff was today, so be looking forward to some public input meetings and we've got a lot of cool ideas. We took them on a tour today of the town and everything, so it's a lot of really exciting activities coming soon.
And exciting is truly an understatement. I mean, it's, for those of us that were sitting in this meeting, I'm telling you, it, it blew me away, the things, the ideas that that committee has, so.
Well, I know that the two concerts went really well. Great weather, everybody had a great time and really gives the town a good feel. I know the Fairness Square did the same thing. It is really a nice town here, full of nice people.
Can I, can I add something? I know I passed on my time, but I, I think I texted both you and Tom about this, but over the last week or two, you know, with the filming of Mayberry Man here and just some other things going on, there were a lot of positive comments made about the town. I, I ran into a couple of members of the, of the crew at Friday night, the first night, you know, the drive-in, whatever, with the older cars. And they were just blown away how many people were there. And then I was talking to him about some of the other things we do around here and it, so it's just been a good couple of weeks, three weeks for the town and I think that's really good, especially this year.
And we, we did receive approval for this Saturday night for our safety plan for the concert on the square. So, Caitlin had sent me an email asking me about that the other day, so she's doing her job, doing her job. But the Health Department did approve the safety plan, so the Levi Riggs concert is a go for Saturday night.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, we're gonna come to something a little different today. We've been trying to build our management team here in the town hall and, and strengthen what we have. And what we're going to do is formalize a couple of commissioners tonight. We have a few commissioners up here, but we're gonna deal with the fire and the police commissioners. First responders, it's very important these days, you know, all the trouble with everything happening in other cities with the police and also with the firemen. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna formalize two of our councilmen up here that are commissioners. One is the police commissioner and the other one's the fire commissioner. And I, one at a time or together?
Yes, sir.
No, it's one at a time.
Yes, sir.
Chris Gerald, can you please stand up and go to the front? And would the firemen please like to come up? No arguing back there.
Right up here, sir, be great.
You didn't know about this, did you?
Initiation.
I have a badge that I'd like to present, present to Commissioner Gerald. I'll let him pass the photo ID around and. him pass the photo ID around. And so with that being said, I'd present you with the Commissioner badge, photo ID.
Very nice.
I'll just go ahead and present that to him.
Hopefully it's Mickey Mouse.
Photo ID.
You, you do realize he's your boss. I'm just saying.
We've already discussed that.
Is there a-
That's a high school picture.
Nice. It's like Trevor.
Thank you, sir. I just want to say a couple things while I got this.
Uh-oh.
First of all, thank you, I appreciate this, but I really couldn't ask for, every time I stopped down, I do. They're always busy. You tell them I'm coming? Yeah, they have an alarm system set on. Rob and I talk every day, most every day, and it's always sweet. He's got. Thank you.
Chief Hilton? Do you have other policemen with you? Now you've brought an entourage, huh? I think they're going to get up front, too.
Mr. President, Madam Vice President, as a token appreciation for a whole year so far that we've worked with you, we'd like to give you this gift tonight and let you know that our working relationship that we've had has been great, and we hope to continue that in the future. So this gift that we're going to produce tonight for you, I didn't have a funny picture, I'm sorry. But we did, we did steal one off the internet for you, so. But we do appreciate everything that you do, and our communication's been great. So we look forward to hopefully working with you in the future and continuing this. So I'll go ahead and present this with you tonight and get a picture.
Just let me say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Nancy's past has been with the undercover police for several years, and now she's in a law firm. And anything we get to do with policing, law, Nancy's our go-to. She's our Judge Judy. We, we had a thing, a, a meeting about a lawsuit, and the lawyer was in there, and so was Nancy. I thought Nancy was the lawyer and the other guy was just visiting. She pulled out history and, oh, all kinds of stuff. And we're very proud of her doing her work and, with the police. And there you go, it's your, your deal.
And don't abuse that.
All right, everybody look this way, Nancy, and one, two, three, Nancy, there we go. Perfect. Thank you.
I just want, I totally got it. And I will try to live out to that honor that this represents, especially now when you guys keep such a dangerous job. I'm a Danville lesbian.
I agree.
We had a different place right now. Day here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's just another step on formalizing our town. We've changed how the management system goes, and now we're getting more serious. So we appreciate these two people and the rest of the councilmen up here and all the other department heads. So enough of fund. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
Claim docket, sir.
All right. Claim dockets?
Move to proof's claim docket.
Second?
Second.
All consents? Yes?
Aye.
Now, all right, we've approved the claim dockets, and a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second. Everybody consent?
Aye.
Meeting is done.